He's very selective when he leaves.
This council meeting is called to order in accordance with the open public meetings law. This meeting of November 7th, 2022 was included in the list of meetings published in the Curry News Star Legend. Notice of this meeting was also placed on the bulletin board of our wall. In addition, a copy of this notice is available to the public and a copy of the statement shall be included in the minutes of this meeting. Mayor Dennis Sullivan.
Here.
Council members, Ramon Brady.
Here.
Tom Mitchell.
Here.
Gina Stravick.
Here.
Roger Vroom.
Here.
Fred Weed.
Here.
Randy Pitts.
Here.
Please join me in the platitude and remain standing. I would like you to see the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of San Francisco, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Since our last meeting, our community is large. I don't know the correct word. Stallards, Titans, Pillars. This town has 12,000 people, all of whom contribute in their own special way. The two people we honor tonight are well-known and remembered. Our first individual is Ralph Chick Sternadori. I don't have time in one meeting to go over Chick's bio, but he served the borough for over half a century. He was instrumental in guiding 10 mayors through the ever-increasing labyrinth of government. He was a Somerville High School graduate, a veteran, a mentor, a friend. Moment of silence for Ralph, mostly known as Chick, Mr. Somerville Sternadori. Thank you. Our second individual, known to most of us, especially in the ranks of the Somerville Fire Department, Charles Skrabowski. Charles was a longtime volunteer fireman. As he got older and wasn't as active in fighting fires, he undertook the curatorship of a fire museum and brought it from where it was as an aging, little visited building to where it is today. A showpiece of memory of the fire department, especially of him. So from this table and all the residents of town and all the former and current and future residents here in the red. Moment of silence for Charles Skrabowski. Thank you. One seven minutes from October 17th, we're going to have an election day.
Salute. Council members Ramon Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yeah.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Vroom.
Yes.
Fred Weed.
Stain.
Randy Pitts.
Yes. And one departmental report, election day tomorrow, holds up at 6:00 a.m., closes at 8:00 p.m. If you're watching this live tonight, if you have already voted, thank you for participating in our democracy. If not, if the weather's like it was today, it should be conducive to a good voter turnout. We thank you for participating in the most important right that we have as American citizens. Any reports? I'll start to my far left, Councilman Mitchell.
Yes. The Boy Scouts will be holding their annual food drive this coming Saturday, the 12th. They have not given out bags this year because the laws have changed regarding food bags. But if you want to participate, put your donations in a bag. Either a paper bag, plastic bag, whatever, or a box, or whatever, on your front stoop where it's visible from the street. And leave the flyer that was distributed with it so that they know that that's to them. Or if you've lost the flyer, just a note saying it's for the scouts. And on behalf of the Somerset County Food Bank, thank you all very much.
Thank you. Councilman Vroom.
I have no what to say.
Thank you. Dr. Brady.
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. As you said, tomorrow is election day. And one of the most important issues facing voters is the sewer referendum. And this is the last time I will speak about it. For those who might not know, this is the same water company that has served Somerville for many years. It's not some outside group that's coming in and know anything about the town. Voters who approve the sale of the sewer system will not notice anything by any way. New Jersey American Water begins its analysis of the condition of the sewers and develops a remediation plan that would invest almost $10 million to repair and rehabilitate a system that's almost 100 years old. In addition to the investment, New Jersey American Water will pay Somerville $7 million that would retire much of the debt at a time when interest rates are skyrocketing. There's some that might believe that we have not done our due diligence, and that's simply not true. For those who think that the sewer referendum is political simply because it appears on the voters' ballot, I have to remind everyone there is no Republican or Democratic way to operate the sewer. Only the right way, and New Jersey American Water will do that for us. So please, vote yes for the sewer referendum tomorrow. And that's my report, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilman.
I'd like to report that MetLife volunteers, in conjunction with the New Jersey Tree Foundation, successfully planted 40 trees at LeFart, which will help us stabilize the banks of the Peters Brook as well as provide shade to the playground area, which is getting pretty hot around the water park. So we need to thank MetLife publicly, as well as their clean volunteers and the New Jersey Tree Foundation for coordinating that. And the other thing that has happened recently is that the volunteers with the Environmental Commission and Green Team are preparing the community garden for the winter. They had a bunch of volunteers down there this weekend that were able to mulch the area and start to clean it up for the winter. So next year will be a robust year for residents to be able to take beds out and plant their own gardens. So thank you to the Environmental Commission for that. And they also, as I remind you, to mulch and compost your leaves. That is a green light. I know you might have too many, but make sure you mulch and compost some of them. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Weed.
Yeah, a few quick items. It is not too late to sign up for the Turkey Trap 5K Thanksgiving morning. And if you are not into running, not everyone's met personally myself, but there are plenty of volunteer opportunities for that. It starts early, usually volunteers will start at 7:00, but I know Jason Krask is there probably at 4:00 in the morning, if not even earlier than that, knowing him, so helping set up the tent. So if you feel, it's really a thankless ask, but if you feel you need to help out with something in town on Thanksgiving morning, I know we can use the help for a really good event. I will make note, sort of a stay tuned type of thing. Municipal Alliance Commission is currently looking into Narcan training sometime in the next spring. Now Narcan, if you're not familiar, Narcan kit helps overdoses. If someone is overdosing, it is a spray that goes up the nostrils and it pretty much saves their life until the paramedics can arrive, sort of jolts them. I did a Narcan training a few years ago and it was very worthwhile. And we have a treatment center over on West End, we have the hospital on the east side of town. And I have lost two people in my life due to, one to an overdose and one to a drug addiction. So it's very important, so stay tuned for that. We hope to roll that out and have some sort of training session in the spring. Just a couple of quick items from last meeting. Fortunately, I could not attend. I had a light to it, but 102 fever kept me bedridden. I just want to thank the mayor and council for finally having a long overdue discussion on affordable housing. I'm glad this took place and I look forward to the next steps on that. And finally, there was a resolution regarding the Parkview Park. Developer had asked for sort of a break on, not a break, but sort of a step down from the initial plans. Just wanted to be on the record, had I been at the meeting, I would have voted no because I did not feel that the developer should get a break on building the park there. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. President.
Dr. Mayor.
Okay. Just a few quick items. This coming Friday is 11/11, Veterans Day. We will be assembling at the Plaza on Grove Street with our traditional Veterans Day observation. Will be prayer, several patriotic songs, a few brief remarks from several familiar faces. Calladard, Onward will be there from Louisiana as well. So if your schedule allows it, please come Friday morning, 11 o'clock, at the Plaza to honor our veterans past and present. I was pleased to visit Baker &amp; Taylor the other morning, 8:00 in the morning. I was invited at her to witness the beginning of the inside demolition of the building. Finally, I've lived in that neighborhood for 44 years and I was in the front of the building where the offices were several times. I had never been into the warehouse part and it looks like a giant airplane hangar. It's really huge. And what the company has done is they've organized all the salvageable material into piles so that all of that material that can be safely recycled will be, that will be taken care of. The cleanup is being run under the auspices of the DEP in Trenton so that the materials will be disposed of properly. Once the inside is completely cleaned out, the DEP will allow them to begin the outside demolition. So the site will, probably won't look like much activity for a while, but I'm hoping within the next few months, the site will be cleared and they can start the regrading and the infrastructure work that's going to be needed to support the project there. It's just after 15 years of an empty building, it's just a good feeling to see another underutilized property being rehabilitated for people to live. Somewhere upon Baker &amp; Taylor will come. The last thing is, as I've been walking around town in the fall, I've gotten a lot of favorable feedback on the rumble strips that we have put at certain key intersections. And most people I talk to have a simple question, when are they coming to my street as well? So, Mr. President, in the role of this police commissioner, I'd like you to work with the police department over the next few weeks to identify stretches of road that led themselves to speeding. We have a couple of east-west streets without traffic control, Spring Street being one. We have already some traffic devices there. But if you could ask our traffic department to take a look at spots that we feel would be a good location for those strips so we can get an idea of how much work we need to do for the spring. We try to monitor speeding, but at any one time, our six police officers that are out on patrol literally can't be everywhere. But it looks like the strips are working for the most part. There's still human error. Until you take that out of the equation, we're still going to have issues. But I think if we build upon the success that we've had with those strips and bring them into the side streets as well. I know we've been focusing on the streets that come off of 22 and then rightly so because that's where people build up the speed and they don't respect the neighborhood that they're entering. But I think if we expand that into some of our east-west streets as well, I rely on the patrol division to work with us on identifying those spots. And then we can report back to the public as that program goes on. So it's on our radar, literally, and we look to make sure that our streets are safe. Kevin, I'll ask again, have you heard back from the state or the county on traffic studies? They're supposed to be related to my request for the 25 mile an hour deduction.
Well, the county is conducting the one that you've asked for specifically on the signalization. They're not studying the 25 mile an hour one. The state, I haven't.
Let's reach out to the state's people again. We're looking at the eastern hand of town, where there's a school and a daycare and a mental hospital and a new emergency service facility. Now, we're not grateful for having the limit drop from 20 to 25 from Beddo Street to Quinette Boulevard, but Beddo Street East to Addams World is just as important and maybe even more so. So let's make sure that the state hasn't forgotten that we need that study. Okay. We have a series of ordinances for hearing and adoption. We'll take each one of them individually. There'll be an open public hearing and collection for each one. So we have comments, a lot of specific ordinance, just wait for that hearing, for that ordinance along and we'll get, it looks like we have five of them. So our first one for hearing adoption is 2686, amending ordinance 2588, regulating the towing of motor vehicles and establishing penalties for the violation and raising the fees for storage and towing of vehicles. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Same.
Council members Ramon Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell. Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Vroom.
Yes.
Fred Weed.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Public hearing on this first ordinance. Hearing none, motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
Council members Ramon Brady, yes. Tom Mitchell. Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Vroom.
Yes.
Fred Weed.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Our second ordinance for adoption, 2687. Oh, I'm sorry, we need to go now. Please, thank you. Motion for adoption.
So moved.
Second. Open.
Council members Ramon Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Vroom.
Yes.
Fred Weed.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
All right, our second ordinance, 2687, amending Chapter 166, Section 51, entitled Yield Intersection, Deleting North Midor, Intersection of Prospect and North Mida, or North Midor, and changing that to a Stop Intersection. So I have a motion for the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Council members Ramon Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Vroom.
Yes.
Fred Weed.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Public hearing, comment on this ordinance. Hearing none, motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
Council members Ramon Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Vroom.
Yes.
Fred Weed.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Motion for adoption.
So moved.
Second.
Council members Ramon Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Vroom.
Yes.
Fred Weed.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Kevin, approximately, how long does it take to make that change?
It has to be advertised 15 days.
No, by December, it should be ready to go.
Yeah.
Excellent. Okay. Our third ordinance, 2688, amending Chapter 166, Section 46-1, entitled Schedule, Permit Parking to Include Second Street and Third Street from South Bridge Street and Alabot's. Motion for public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Council members Ramon Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Vroom.
Yes.
Fred Weed.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Public hearing, comments, questions on this ordinance. Yes, come up the light, name and address.
Lori Van Ness, 27 Second Street. I appreciate it. I'm happy for it. However, on the letter that we received, it says that there is parking on both sides of Second Street. There is no parking on the one side. We can't have parking on both sides. It's too small. So I'm just a little concerned.
The letter was just to advise on the public hearing.
All right, we're not changing the parking to both sides. It's still only going to be on the north side. The only thing we'll change is the fact that you will have to get residential and guest stickers, rated cards that you own that will park.
Okay, no, I was just concerned because everything else was exactly saying Third and all that and on Second Street it said.
I see what you mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you only have parking on the.
Only on the north side.
Only on the north side.
And on Third.
We could change that in the ordinance to write the north side so that it's reflected correctly.
Yeah, somebody looked it up and it parked. We have enough trouble. They already.
Well, I mean, honestly, it's removing, you know, I know what you mean. That's why we'll just check. We'll make it reflect more. Thank you.
Second.
Right in front of my house, everybody.
Teo Garcia, 171 Mercer Street. I was not advised of this, but I met with residents of Third Street who were familiar with permit parking being implemented and they had voice on concerns that I hope Mr. Mayor will be able to address. Their main concern is if they'll have to pay for these permits and what the cost fee will be. And to the extent that there's any payment for any registered parking, I strongly voice in the opposition to having residents pay for a permit to park in front of their property. Of course, residents in this town already pay enough in terms of property taxes. I think that's a burden. With any additional fees to park would be an unwelcome charge. So if you could, Mr. Mayor, please clarify for the public, if there's any extra charge, perhaps even not only for the residential, but for the guest parking passes as well, what does payment look like? And again, I'm echoing the concerns I've heard from residents who do not wish to be charged additionally to be able to park in front of their property. So thank you.
The change to this ordinance brings that street in line with all the other residential parking, whether it's Mountain Avenue, Post Street, Schoolhouse, Potnum.
Lee Way.
Yeah. There is a limit called, it's one sticker per every registered, registered to the house and Kevin Kirkman, two guest passes.
Each vehicle that's registered to the home gets one?
Yes.
And then there's two guests. The only fee involved is replacements.
Replace.
So if they were to.
But they should all.
Let the person leave with it, you have to replace it.
Another question to the back. Yes, name and address for the record. Thank you.
Top Canisha, 75 Third. With a guest, there's a limit of two guest passes. What happens if you need more?
The ordinance allows it.
So what does that mean? So is this like if you're having a party or something? Yeah. They notify the police department?
Yeah, there's no public police department. You're having like a bar party or the straight up party, house party. What difference? I mean, are you thinking about having people stay overnight, type of guests?
Sometimes, yeah.
The ordinance is 9:00 a.m.
9:00, 9:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m.
9:00 a.m., 8:00 p.m. after 8:00 p.m.
These ordinances basically try to reflect a nearby business use that spills over into the neighborhood. If you are going to have a number of people, graduation room, something like that, call our police department, let them know that there will be excess cars on the street and they'll work. This is not punitive. We're not looking to generate fines because we're going to be driving around looking for unlicensed cars. We're trying to reduce the commuter and business use that's spilling over because I don't know what the charges in the new deck adjacent to the train. I suspect a good number of the cars that are now parked on this street. And I was there the other day in the middle of the day and it was wall to wall. And it's not, I know it's not people that are living there because they're taking their cars to work. So it's overflow from activity to the west of you. So if you are going to have a number of cars, just call. I would say call down there.
It's the Borough Hall. We manage that.
Oh, you meant Borough Hall.
We have had situations, while they're very few, where someone needs extra passes for a day or two. We provide a one or two day pass and that's just provided directly to the user that has an expiration date for two days.
Okay, and I know he, this gentleman asked something about the cost. Is that guarantee that there will never be a cost?
Well, if there's ever a fee scheduled for anything, there has to be a public hearing. So I'm sure if there was a fee attached to this, you'd be back here again. Right, so. I can never, ever, never. Can I get the phone you've been asking to?
Town, C.O.W.N.S.
Oh, thank you.
Just in relation to that, we can't make decisions that bind future elected bodies. But the easiest way to fill this room is to have a meeting about parking. I would suspect that a fee for residential parking would require us to meet at the ballpark because that would generate some interest and probably no interest with any elected official.
Well, should I cancel that parking meter order now?
I don't see anyone, and again, I can't commit people down the road, but I can't see anyone that is at the current table approving an ordinance to pay and make people pay to park in front of their own street. So.
There is a fee for replacement.
Right, if it's lost.
What's that paid for?
I believe that's fees, $5. For the few times we, I mean, you have to kind of manage your gas bag itself. So honestly, I think in the past, we've just had the same property owner, maybe using guest passes and then they become dispersed. So we put that where it needs to affect maybe, I don't know, five years ago. And since then, we haven't ever collected. And I don't think we have lost a guest pass, right? Because we haven't certainly collected.
Just make sure your guests are even back here within weeks.
Okay.
A little public comment on. Yes, Mr.? Part of the area, 1 Center Street. I'm glad that council acted so fast after the conversation I had with Mr. Saluda about a month ago. You sat up there, you sat on the planning board, Grant is on the planning board, I'm on the board of adjustment. We know that when we're dealing with applications on housing, that there's parking requirements. What's happened with the new, with all the new apartments that have come in, that they started charging their people for parking. I know Brookside's been doing it for years, if you want special parking, like a garage. I think you, I think we need to have a meeting and start talking about changing the ordinance that requires the parking to be free. I know if we have a, we just had one last week where they're actually taking away some parking because they need the requirements, they need 18, they have 23 available parking spaces. They're going to take some away, but it's all going to be free. I think it's something we're going to have to look at in the next iteration of the master plan or zoning and planning ordinances. No more? Motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
Council members Ramon Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Vroom.
Yes.
Fred Weed.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Motion for adoption.
So moved.
Second.
Just have a few comments. Just trying to, based on some of the comments where I think it's suffice to say, you know, if we're calling Borough Hall. I know other towns have a system where you sort of call in, maybe we can promote that, you know, if you have any parking. I don't know what the right answer for that is, but at least know that, hey, it's Borough Hall, you call.
And I felt to mention that, that just because you have a guest, it doesn't mean that you can't borrow your neighbor's guest as well. So that's what I think happens generally.
Yeah, and yeah, it's still getting used to. I can't tell you how many times I've driven off away with my parents' guest pass. You know, I have to just return it. I will say about the whole fee thing, I know the mayor had said it, but I'll just say it bluntly. Over my dead body, will I ever vote for a fee for residents? And I think maybe we should even look to waiving the fee of the replacement badge. Even though it's never been used, I just think, I just think that's a part of the act of the. And that's all I have.
I just want to add that this is giving residents a license on the street that they pay for. And it's not meant to be punitive in any way to residents of Somerville. Now, there are residents of Somerville that may rent apartments elsewhere, but they don't have the right to clog up your road and that's the way where it's done. I live on Lee Way and we've had resident parking for, I guess, when I got it, almost 15, 20 years ago. And at this point in time, to be honest with you, I'd like to take it off because quite honestly, it's never been tested. The hospital has a deck which is free, so it's probably not needed. But right now, at this time, it's needed. So I think the most prudent way to. So I think that the most prudent way to do it is to require permit parking for residents who live in the area. It helps you out, it also helps other people out who know they can't get away with parking there. And I'm very much...
Kevin, just a question in terms of how, how we know those people, how they get their passes.
So implementations always a little tricky, I've done it with 104 in the last two years. So what happens is, just like this, we only notice the people on the blocks that are affected, right? So what happened was, we did send out a notice to everyone on the block about this ordinance, I should say, on both streets. What'll happen is, is we'll send the notice out with the application form, and we also padded on start work, electric form as well, which we approved this afternoon. So what happens is, is while there's an electronic form, it's still gonna require the end user to either scan in or copy documentation, or they could print out just for municipal buildings. So what happens is, is it's a little tricky in the sense that we'll send out a notice, we'll send out multiple notices, and then eventually, you know, at some point, there'll be a process in which we start a warning enforcement program, where we start sending out warnings, which will likely, in this case, be like January type of thing, and then eventually, it would be enforced in, 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 equipped with the code. So everybody should expect to receive a warning now. I think at one point, we actually hand-delivered them on field on drive, because so few people ever came in for them initially, but we actually do those of them. We probably likely do the same thing here, we probably wait till, you know, all the mail that's coming in every box lately counts as sizable, and then send it out by law. I mean, this goes into effect, you know, ten days, I think you have the noticing, but it's not something that's gonna happen.
Because it wasn't signed, it's...
Yeah, it probably won't happen till January, but you'll start receiving some correspondence on it.
No question, Kevin, but permit is good only for that particular resident's street, am I correct? It's not used where the other streets are. Because I know when I got my new one, it had it just for my street.
So according to the ordinance, the, it's, it's added to the list of, of the other permits? So technically, you could probably park on one of those streets that are within that ordinance.
Within that ordinance, but they couldn't park on that street, because obviously...
Well, you're in that ordinance.
Really? How come it has a W on top of that?
Well, what happens when people register, we know the block, you have to register on the block that you're on, but, but if you were to park on a different street that had permit parking, you, you wouldn't get a somewhere to that. So, but we would know that, we would know that, you know, what, what you're, you know, the area you're in, under that ordinance, you couldn't get a, you couldn't be penalized.
And just, and just a quick note too, I don't think we quite explained logistics, so for like permit vehicles, you actually put a sticker like on the back window.
Right.
Yeah, it's, it's actual sticker, the guest passes are like a little hang tags. It's just, I don't think we explained that, I just wanted to...
You would hear it through the back window.
In years, in years to come, we may be doing the license plate recognition, that might be easier, you know, we're gonna, this system's gonna change at some point. It's, it's an antiquated system that unfortunately, everybody has learned. But it may, you know, enforcement-wise, it's difficult to do, you know, because you're checking documents and going back and forth, so it's not an easy enforcement process.
Ballot.
Council members, the public portion was closed, unless the mayor was open.
Now, we can, you can bring it up in the regular section.
Council members, Graham O'Brady?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yes.
Tina Stravic?
Yes.
Roger Fromm?
Yes.
Fred Weed?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
Our next ordinance, 2689, creating chapter 164 of the Borough Code, title vacant and abandoned properties. Motion for public hearing.
So move?
Second.
Council members, Graham O'Brady?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yes.
Tina Stravic?
Yes.
Roger Fromm?
Yes.
Fred Weed?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
Kevin, could you briefly summarize?
Yeah, so this was a, an effort by the legislature earlier last year that we, we actually, although some had midterm work on, all vacant, there's two classifications, vacant and abandoned, those particular property owners or those particular financial entities that are in charge of that mortgage or that, that property, do have to register with the Borough, we do have to make that a public list, that does get posted on our website, and there's a fee for that effort, but that's really what it is, it's, it's, you know...
It's mandated by the state law.
It's mandated by the state, state, yeah, by the state law.
Public comment, questions? Hearing none, motion to close.
So move?
Second.
Council members, Graham O'Brady?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yes.
Tina Stravic?
Yes.
Roger Fromm?
Yes.
Fred Weed?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
Motion for adoption. Move?
Second. Second, and I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
Uh, paragraph 111 dash 11, under article three, and it says shall be designated by resolution of the period, should be resolution to the council.
Thank you. And so our guest will be included in that management.
All right, ballot.
Council members, Graham O'Brady?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, we're still in public. Like, no, we... Thank you. I'll let you speak. All right.
Council members, Graham O'Brady?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yes.
Tina Stravic?
Yes.
Roger Fromm?
Yes.
Fred Weed?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
And our last ordinance is 2690, amending chapter 80 to title fire prevention, life safety, it's out of waivers from local committee and registration piece to include the downtown Somerville ordinance, and motion for public hearing.
So move? Second.
Council members, Graham O'Brady?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yes.
Tina Stravic?
Yes.
Roger Fromm?
Yes.
Fred Weed?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
Right, public session?
I just have a question there.
Motion to close, ballot, and we'll do council.
So move?
So move.
Second.
Council members, Graham O'Brady?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yes.
Tina Stravic?
Yes.
Roger Fromm?
Yes.
Fred Weed?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
Motion for adoption.
So move? Second.
Um, so the DSA is a nonprofit, correct?
Yeah, not a nonprofit, yeah.
So, I mean, what's to stop us then from exempting the YMCA and any other nonprofit in town? I mean, it sets a precedent?
Now, the DSA is funded by the tax dollars, so, so that's really the difference between DSA and everybody else, to be honest with you. So, I mean, it's really, are the tax dollars gonna pay the fees? By the way, by the way, just, just so you understand, is they don't pay now, that's just something I discovered in the ordinance when we were going through it, that they weren't list, properly listed. So really, that, that is the difference, is it's really, you know, while it's a non-for-profit for the purposes of operations, the majority of, of funding comes from local taxes.
And, and the, and the SID?
Yeah.
Yeah, SID just...
Yeah, yeah, so you have, you have a budget of about nine hundred thousand or about eight hundred.
I just want, I just want to clarify, it's an SID, not a, not a borough's.
So that's the criteria in terms of deciding who gets exempted?
Well, I mean, I think, I think that's the best answer I can give you, council member.
It's used to be included under Borough of Somerville, but it's no longer in Borough under, it's now 501(c)(3).
Yeah, I mean, they do pace fees for other things, you know, obviously, these things like that, this is specifically, you know, an area which they weren't paying fees, and in a review of the ordinance, we, I noticed they weren't beyond that, so we'll look into...
That's a needed issue.
Basically, to...
Now, there's this, these first two categories, the fire department and the rescue squad, did that include individual members?
So I, I didn't remove, no, so I, I didn't remove, I didn't remove anything else, I mean, the rescue squad obviously is another not-for-profit, but, but my point was just trying to get the ordinance in line with these current practices.
Ballot.
Council members, Graham O'Brady?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yes.
Tina Stravic?
Yes.
Roger Fromm?
Yes.
Fred Weed?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
Hey, we have open public session, I need a motion.
So move?
Second.
Council members, Graham O'Brady?
Yes.
Tom Mitchell?
Yes.
Tina Stravic?
Yes.
Roger Fromm?
Yes.
Fred Weed?
Yes.
Randy Pitts?
Yes.
Open public session, if you would like to comment, please come to the mic, name and address, address your comments to myself, and try to adhere to the five-minute limitation. Mr. Dixon? Order near 81 Center Street, a couple things, yes, spoken a couple months ago, I think it was last year, about replacement of the coenforcement officer, how are we dealing with that?
Well, we can't discuss personnel.
No, I'm just, not issues, just are we gonna replace that position?
I believe the position was funded.
Great, excellent. Friday, see you at 11 o'clock, we're gonna have the re-basement, the Legion is always, but instead of having our regular Friday night dinners, re-basement all day, so it's free food all day, and a free drink for the veterans. And I did have one other thing, but, you know, age has gotten to never get one.
You can stand there for three, four more minutes if you like.
Yeah, I would say it's, it's nice to see you here, I know you, like I had some, you had issues the last two weeks, and it's good to see you here, and it's good for me to be here, so...
Well, as we say in my job, it's better to be seen than to be viewed.
Exactly. Looking down at the flowers rather than up at the rooms.
Yeah, I had the honor of hearing Charlie Kervowski last week, I know Charlie, about seventy years, and I was telling Richie O'Neil, I said, I woke up on Monday thinking about Charlie because I had called the firemen's, the old firemen's home a couple weeks ago because I'm resurrecting what I call my court ministry, I sent courts to people, Fred near mom and I talked about it when she was working at the nursing home, I sent courts to people in nursing homes, I started sending it to the firemen's home, but I just called to see who else we had up there, we had Jose Gary is the last one up there, and found out I got a call later on Charlie had died, and so we said we're gonna continue with the court ministry, and the other thing we're gonna start doing again at the cemetery is honoring the fire, firemen and women who are buried there in the, quote, the military section by placing the fireman's flag on the pole, starting, because tomorrow I'm gonna start it again. I had done it for about ten years, I was told stop, we're gonna do it again. And the other thing, I really, we'll, we'll talk.
Thank you.
Oh, you remember him?
Yeah.
Larry Van Ness, 27 Second Street. I do appreciate the strips on the road, however, I'm no engineer, I'm no traffic expert. On our street, there's such a big problem, I think people are like using probably Southside Third as their pass through because now there's no traffic light, so, you know, they always avoid whatever. Number one, the, in front of the store, they continue to park there in the morning, it's particular, it's just concerning because of the kids. The cars coming in from Hillsborough, from wherever, are just ducking through, ducking through, so our strips are on the other side at that end where people are parked on them. And then, so what they do, and I'm sure they do, I don't know how it's set up anywhere else, but what they do is they turn up Second Street and just fly down there till they get to the strips that are at center. So that area in particular with the little store brings all the trucks who park on the wrong side of the street, and then cars coming up, flying up the street, and this is a time period, I'd say, between like seven in the morning to about nine, so it's right when the kids are mobile. I mean, it's concerning anyway, but it's particularly scary with the kids. So I don't know what the solution is, and I'm not sure why the strips weren't down like kind of the other way on our street, because literally, the cars are parked on the strip on, at the corner of Second and South Bridge Street, so nobody's really getting any good benefit or anything. It probably slows people down when they get to Center Street, and I don't want anything taken away, I'm just wondering how that was worked. And is there gonna be any kind of thing we can do about the parking in front of the store, which is actually now a traffic lane, it's not parking there?
If, if it's marked properly, it can be enforced, so...
Okay, well, we, we, we understand, I believe it is marked properly. That doesn't mean it's enforced, like how, how, you know what I mean, like, what does that look like?
Because we removed that parking not long ago, once the light went in.
And the other part of it was where, I, I think it started with someone and whatever, but we never had all that parking on the other side of, actually, South Bridge Street. In front of, you know, like when you're at Second, they're parking right, and it's marked, you guys marked it, they're parked right to the corner, so anyone trying to get out, you, you've got people parked illegally in front of the store in the morning, you've got trucks parked up Second Street on the wrong side in the morning, and then you come to the corner, and there is no way anyone can see to get out, or, or could kids cross safely, so I know, I feel like I'm beating a dead horse, but it's really starting to get concerning, you know, for, for everybody, but my, I mean, literally, my husband goes to Hillsborough, and my husband has to go to South Side to get out because he cannot see to get, make that left-hand turn.
All right, so let's, let's have patrol take a look at that and make sure that...
Yeah, I will say, I don't know, seventy-nine is a real problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jilt was on 136 West Cliff. I have a concern about a fence that I recently erected on my property, I had this put up in August, it was a little oversight, my contractor had thought that I was gonna get a permit, and I had thought that he was, the day that they were putting up the fence, John Muselli came by and he realized that we had the mistake, so I went and I applied for the fence the next day because I was away that day. My neighbor also applied for the fence, we're sharing the fence, they're on 54 Mercer, but I'm on a corner of Clip and Mercer, so they, his fence was approved, mine was denied, and we're sharing the fence. I questioned why mine was denied, and he said that my fence was not in compliance because I'm on a corner house, and I said I was literally replacing a fence that was there, I had a six-foot fence there, wooden, literally replaced to a white PVC. He said it needed to be four foot on West Cliff Street, we complied with that, six-foot put in the exact same spot, I'm sorry, took a couple notes. I had dug up a variance from 2006, which was approved by the Borough, approved January 2007. The original fence was wood, this one is PVC, which was not common in 2006, so he's holding me on the fact that this fence, on one word, he said because I did not replace it with a wood fence, but even though everything else matches up with the language, the height of the fence, the place of the fence. We discussed about a site issue, there is no site issue, I've taken pictures, and he has agreed with me, there is no site issue. I said that there are many of my neighbors on corners with the same white PVC fence in the area, and he said to me, do you want me to go take it then? I did not want to ask my neighbors to come be here because I was feeling like that would, like, I don't want them to be harassed. Let's see, I want to make sure...
Do you have a consent application?
Yes, but I don't feel that there, yeah.
So you have a current application?
I, I, I complied with him to put in the application, I didn't put in the application fee because I have the variance, I have the variance, and it was approved for the life of the fence, and it was approved by the Borough in 2007.
No, I'm gonna defer to my attorney's essence of zoning board issue, we, I think, are precluded from, from even discussing, not, not to be disrespectful, but the way zoning board functions is an autonomous body.
I didn't, I didn't pay for the application, he asked me to put the application, so I was trying to comply with what was asked of me.
So, so my understanding is that, that once a zoning officer has a denial of compliance, So, so my understanding is that, that once the zoning officer has a denial of compliance, then, 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 uh, that denial can be appealed to the board, right? Then that's the normal, I, I don't know that you can procedurally appeal that to the council.
I'm not sure what the procedure is at all, that's why I came for the public forum. This is, uh, new to me and I've discussed with a couple of different people in town and they suggested that I come here and, uh, see what my options are.
Yeah, so I, I think it's easier, I'd say, it's more appropriate, maybe a member of the council and I sit down with Mr. Tucson and discuss it to make sure she's, because I, I don't, I don't want her to, you know, you know, affect her process.
Kevin, I think any appeal would have to, if an appeal was filed, if it was not handled immeasurably, would have to be the zoning board. Should that fail, then I think we can't seem to get involved. Even if I'm wrong, but I think that's how it happens.
If you're agreeing with the decision of the zoning officer, then take it to the zoning board.
Yes.
So my next step, um, with the zoning board meeting?
So, yeah, yeah, there's a process for that.
That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, yeah, there's a process for that. I mean, there's, if you give me an opportunity to, not to mark a selection day, but the following day is, is to have a conversation with John and yourself and.
I could do Thursday or Friday.
Okay. And, and, uh, and to just give you the direct path, you know.
I would appreciate that, because this, this whole process has been kind of confusing for me.
Yeah, I do, and I'm a little familiar with that, you know, you and I have had conversations. And, and I just want to make sure, I, I know you're presenting the governing body, I wouldn't say testimony, but, but information about it. Just want to make sure that information is as accurate as it can be and make sure that, to see if, maybe there is a zoning issue. Maybe, maybe there's not, you know? But I think that giving me the time to spend with you and to go over with him, may, maybe it's something that, that, um, we could, we could look at and if it's not, then I'd give you the right path that you, you actually have to follow.
I would appreciate that, thank you.
Appreciate your time tonight.
Teo Garcia, one seventy-one Mercer. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I'm here to comment about two roads that I think need much repair. Brookside Avenue is in great disrepair, it's pretty horrendous.
It's on the list, we have a project, we have a grant that hasn't been bid yet.
Uh, no, that, that's, well, I think two years ago, we selected, uh, we, I think the council selected GTI.
We have a great application.
I mean, almost all the road projects that we have, it's, other design is a spring job.
Yeah, that's part of, that's part of the spring job.
On our radar, it's just not going to be fixed, you know, in the, in the short term.
Uh, and then the other one, hopefully that is on your radar, is Eastern States Parkway, which is also.
It's about half done. The piping's done, curving's done, the driveway opens are done and the handicap grants are done. Now, the last step will be the, the milling and paving of that road.
You wanted a contract that capital paid.
And that's being paid for by the water company because they tore it up last year. So that, that's probably a couple of weeks away from completion, Kevin, you think?
Yeah.
Looks like most of the building already was done.
We've had one changeover, so far, it's a pretty big part.
Yeah, there was an issue with a, a pipe or something, because I saw the water company out there and he goes with that. But that, it's, it's just about ready to be milled and resurfaced, so that should be done.
And for now, for the public, with Brookside Avenue, one, a timeframe is expected to be, is expected to be finished as when?
Brookside, yeah.
They won't pay the money.
Brookside's under design right now.
So the expected completion date is?
I, I, it, I can't say completion date, it's a good date. So the bid, bid date is, is probably, uh, like, early, early spring. Goes out to bid, if it's a successful bid, that takes about sixty total days, um, on the construction, um, in, in May. And, uh, you know, then we have to kind of look at the school schedule a little. So, you know, I couldn't commit to a particular construction because that's just, we're, we're just kind of far away from that, but it's about to be out to bid.
And it will be part of, we won't just do that road, we'll bid it with other roads to get a better price to it. But it will, I think we're safe to say it'll be done next year.
Uh, it is, okay, that, my concern is that the road has gotten into such disrepair, uh, and I don't think it got to that point so quickly. And I'm surprised that it will take this long to get it repaired. It's a really terrible road, uh, probably the worst one in town, I understand it's Parkway, but that one's being repaired as we speak, if I'm not mistaken. Um, and the residents of Brookside have been impacted by the hurricane floods from last year. And many of the buildings came into disrepair, the property manager seems to do a poor job with getting that up to speed. And now the road has been like that for quite a while. Um, and this isn't something I don't think that this body has heard of for the first time. So I'd just like a little bit more care and concern for the maintenance of roads because now we're going to enter the winter season and I understand that there's no paving that goes underway in winter. But, I mean, to go through the winter season and potholes on the road, um, that's pretty scary. And that road is very well-traveled, it connects Mercer and Mountain. Students use it, commuters to work, anyone going to get onto the interstate twenty-seven, uh, or go to the Bridge Water Mall. Uh, so I'd just like to see a little bit more care and concern for the roads and that they, uh, to get to a point of such disrepair uh, so late in the game. I'm pressing for a timeframe just because I think that when it comes to civic government, we want our leaders to be able to act in a way that can hold them accountable. Uh, so I do hope that by the springtime, there is some change there, but the road is very bad, terrible.
That, that project started eighteen months ago, just so you're aware. So it's not a project that, that, I mean, certainly in defense of the council, not that I have to depend on, but that's a project that's, that the funding process actually started eighteen months ago on that project. Unfortunately, some of the other projects are funded privately through the New Jersey American Water and those roads do flip over very quickly because they're funded immediately. When, when it's public funding or state funding, there's an entire process that has to follow. And I'm not committing to, to a date because it can't be done, I'm not committing to a date because, you know, it goes out to bid. If there's a problem to bid, we have to rebid, unfortunately, that does take a little time. And we do try to coordinate that with other projects. I mean, there are other utilities, PSENG, that's planning to do work in the spring, so we would try to work around that. So, so timing wise, I mean, and they are going to do, PSENG is going to do a lot of work.
Was Eastern States Parkway funded privately or is that publicly funded?
Eastern States, uh, it was a public-private, so what happens is New Jersey American Water and Donal, we did the exact numbers, gave us about three hundred eighty thousand dollars towards that project, um, and, and the borough had to fund the rest.
Kevin, is there potholes, is it possible that we can hear this fill?
Yeah, I mean, there's no doubt in, Mr. Garcia's correct, unfortunately, some roads deteriorate quicker than others and, and.
We have, we have the pot, report a pothole program on the website.
Yeah, so, so we'll go, we'll, we'll make sure we put some, a hot patch in there, we'll still get out that.
Any more public comment? Yes?
Robert Young on the third street, um, bringing up the parking, just a question. If it's not designated to the actual street, Second Street or Third Street, that's the issue we have now, is the buildings, um, you know, as you're stating, they're charging for their parking, so they park on our streets and take away from us. So if it doesn't, if it just says resident, then anyone can still park there. And if you have guest passes, because you live there, you're welcoming guests, then we still find the same issue where the parking is taken up because they're going to do that extra fee that the open is charging.
So the clarification, if I may, is that it's being designated, whether it's allowed on, if you live on Second or Third, you can park on either of those two roads, it's specifically for the residents of Second and Third. Would not be giving out permits to residents of other buildings, it's only for those streets.
And, and my, and people who live on another street, Schoolhouse Lane, you know, Mountain, they, they can't park there and use their bags.
But it'd be no point.
Technically, it wouldn't make sense.
So, yes, at the end of the day, that, the situation in particular, as you were talking about, as it pertains to whether it's the train station or any of those other new apartment buildings, they would not be allowed to get that permit.
Is that the same for, was it North Bridge?
Anybody that, it's only for residents who live at a Second or Third Street address.
And it'll be issued probably through your car or license plate, or your driver's license. There's, there's some document that you have to provide to show that you actually, you have a driver's license.
Registration.
Well, yes.
Registration. Yeah, it'll be a vehicle registration or driver's license, it's a two doc, two documents, that's as far as. Yeah, our, our goal, our goal is to make sure that you folks are not put out, push out everybody else.
We've pushed out a lot now. We had one fellow, he comes up and he parked, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Have a dresser.
I'm sorry.
Are you, do you have anything else?
No, I'm done.
All right, in deference to.
Potonisha Town, Third, seventy-five Third Street. Um, I understand you guys put the strips there, but we need our roads paved. What is that going to happen?
Hey, I, I don't have the, unfortunately, I don't, I have the, I don't have access to it. Um, there are a lot of roads we're looking at in twenty twenty. Why I say we're looking at, PSENG is doing a major improvement in, in municipality through the efforts of the council. So they're, they're coming in to do, just like New Jersey American Water did, we're going to work with them, um, on them. I just don't know what roads they are.
Well, can you guys put together a list so we know? Because Third Street seems to get missed a lot of times on improvements.
I know, I know Second, we did C D B, you.
I don't know about Second.
Uh, I said, I know we did Second because I, you know, I, I worked here at this point, so it's got to be within eight years or whatever.
Yeah, my, my Second just is getting patched and it lasts for like a week, so it's wasteful.
Yeah, the Third, I mean, I don't have the evaluation, but we evaluated the road, so, um, you know.
And we got, and make sure that American Water, you know, provides us, you know, what they're going to do because we don't want to pave the road and then American Water dig it up later.
American Water is near complete, it's, the next, the next is PSENG.
Okay, well, the PSENG.
Is that on the website, the schedule for?
PSENG has, they, they haven't fully adopted their schedule yet, it's for twenty twenty-four, we're going to be twenty twenty-three, just so you go around that.
If you give Mr. Stewart the rest of this week because of elections and then being closed on better and say, give him a call or stop it next week and maybe give you a better idea.
I mean, give me your email to give the, I'll.
I can't tell you, I can't tell you, you know, February.
Yeah, I'm not looking for a specific date, just if there's a timeframe. I understand these, these projects take a while, I'm not expecting it to be done tomorrow.
Each, each road in town is graded on pavement, curbing and drainage. And they put, we put together the individual scores and come up with a total score for the street.
Who does that?
That was done through our engineering models and we, we have that.
And does that get consulted with any of the residents, like a notice, because I haven't.
Well, that, that's for our plan, in terms of, you know, my street is scored a six, that means it's pretty bad, you know? So that needs to move up in schedule. But I, I can't tell you exactly what, what your score is on that street, but there is a matrix that we use.
So you have somebody that goes out to each street?
Yeah, that was done, that was done several years ago.
I mean, it does change.
So you guys have a score for each street, then? Is that public?
Oh, that's.
Yes.
Yeah, it does change because of weather conditions, it changes because utilities come in and do work, it changes because those roads may be privately funded, paved, so it does change.
And does that notice whether it's public or private, get put with each score?
Yeah, like I said, I know, PSENG is coming in, they may make some adjustments.
Yeah.
There, there are some variables in addition to that. Um, we use it for purposes applying for grants as well, so we're able to show the degradation of roads. And the roads are, you know, for the most part, in better shape than they've been in a long time, right? So, so, because we've had so much work done on these roads.
That might be subject.
Actually, well, I would say, objective, actually, that's our.
We've had a benefit, we've had a very big benefit because American Water has dug up a lot of roads and they are responsible to pave them curb to curb. It used to be where you'd have what I call the track, which meant they dug up the road, they patched over where they dug up and you had that trough, okay? And we don't do that anymore. Now all of our utility companies come in and they will actually pave it curb to curb. We don't do the curbing itself, we have to put that. So we've actually gotten a benefit from all of that work. And I live on the eastern end of town and I think Eastern States and Rehill and Lincoln are the only three roads that need to have some, portions being done now. Again, depends upon where the water company was. PSENG is going to take a different view because they've got different parts of the town. It may be more your part of the town because it's, it's older, okay? The infrastructure there is much older, the same thing with the sewers. So when you come right down to it, we've gotten a really good amount of cooperation from those utility companies. And this is all essentially not taxpayer-funded. So I'm really happy when somebody comes in and takes one of our roads. I don't want it to be public, I like it to be private. But I think you'll find as the next couple of years goes by, you're going to see the town will have a huge benefit from the work that's been done. And if you just drive on most of our roads, they look pretty darn good right now.
So again, if you, Kevin, in a few days, give me a call early next week or reach out to them and hopefully can give you a sense of where, where each street lies in the, in the total score.
Yeah, that's not a problem. Thank you.
Last one, Mr. Derrick. I remember. Got to start writing stuff down like I do, Art. Yeah, good read. We had talked about back in April when you met, me and, um, you announced that there was going to be eleven streets and we're going to get the strips and the illuminated stop signs. And I said, Frank Fakili and I had come about twelve years ago and asked for illuminated stop signs on, uh, Center and Third. Has the council given any thought to that? And Ogena let me know before the last meeting that we were getting the strips. I was just wondering if we've given any thought to doing the illuminated stop signs, uh, on Center and Third because we, like every street in town, we have a lot of speeding and disregarding the stop signs. I know the last one we put up was, um, Pep and Road, right?
I, I, I think we have this location.
Because we were talking about four ways. Yeah, we have four ways out there. But we decided to go with the illuminated.
Isn't it, is about six more that, that, in addition, we, you know, we say eleven and we do seventeen.
And that, and that intersection is on the.
I, I believe it is.
Great. If it's not, let's make sure it is. Remember when I was, I was here in April and we talked about promoting the things that the council was doing? Mr. Mayor, you and I have had a conversation, had a bad conversation with my neighbors, um, and they're saying, why do they put the rumble strips on road in these patches? It's promotion. Remember we talked, there's thirty-two, thirty-two miles of road in Somerville? The county has done a, a study and rated each road and that's how you're going to do, do the repairs. And it costs a million dollars a mile to repaint these roads?
Probably more than that now with the price of that.
Yeah, yeah, that would be for all the stuff's going up. But I think we need to get that out there, that it's very expensive, we are, you are working on it and, uh.
We have a plan, it's not just, oh, let's fix that road because I live there.
Well, that's what happened. My road was paved June nineteen seventy-five, that was it. And they stopped in front of my house, right before they got to my house. Um, in front of my house, it's been a lot longer than nineteen seventy-five. But I think we need to get that information out to the people, so, you know, his roads are bad, Mercer, uh, our roads are bad, Center's bad, Third's bad, Second's just been done, South Side looks pretty good. And I know that one of the things that we've done with the zoning board when, um, we had an application, a couple of applications that affected Fifth Street, where they were going to bring fifty-three foot trailers in and we made, no, it's not going down South Side, you have to go down Fourth, Fourth Street. Um, you know, we put that in the, uh, in the resolution, so they have to abide by it. But we got to get the word out that everybody's streets are bad and it costs a lot of money.
The help is on the way.
And the thing is, um, as, as Fred said, and I learned that lesson a long time ago. You tear up a street like Third Street, Third and Center, over the last dozen years, we've had about seven pipe, uh, that they come in, they fix it, they need to patch, go down the street, there's another one. So you have to take a look at the, the infrastructure under the roads, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Art. Motion to the House of the Public, so.
Council members, Graham O'Brady.
Yes.
Uh, Mitchell.
Yes.
Tina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Vron.
Yes.
Fred Weed.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes, I'd like to thank the members of the public for their patience, for their courtesy, for their, you know, constructive questions. Your concerns are heard, thank you. Right, we have a series of consent resolutions. Are there any that council would like to be pulled from individual?
Are there any that council would like to be pulled from individual discussion? I just have one, three thirty-six. Hi, three twenty-nine, authorizing direction of the planning board to examine property eighty-two, Fairmont Avenue. Ask to be determined as an area in need of redevelopment. That'll go to the planning board at the next meeting. Three thirty, authorizing the borough of Somerville to accept this sub grant award for emergency management performance grant, three thirty-one. The awarding of a non-fair and open contract to Major Design Group for the Emergency Services Facility. Three thirty-two, authorizing the transfer of funds in the twenty twenty-two budget. Three thirty-three, approving chapter one fifty-nine from National Opioid Settlement Proceeds. Three thirty-four, establishing an escrow camp for planning and zoning boards within the Providence Bank. Three thirty-five, authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract for professional land surveying and engineering design service for North Fulton Reconstruction. Three thirty-seven, approving the fire department lights parade on December third from six P M. to eleven. Three thirty-eight, approving chapter one fifty-nine for the New Jersey Historic Preservation Fund. Three thirty-nine, approving chapter one fifty-nine for the New Jersey Department of Housing and Urban Development for Shonbridge Park. Three forty, appointing Jasmine McCoy as zoning board of adjustment and planning board secretary. Motion. Someone? Second.
Councilmember Graham O'Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Gina Stravic.
Yes.
Roger Vroom.
Yes.
Fred Weed.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes. Thank you in one eye at all, accepting, number three thirty-six, accepting the resignation for retired purposes of Tony Wharton, effective November first, twenty twenty, ended business stay. Authorizing final payment for time of key. Someone? Second. Mrs. Wharton was hired, I believe, seventeen, eighteen years ago. As I mentioned to her on our last day, when I stopped in, the Wharton family is, is, is one of those colors of the community. Mr. Wharton Senior was fire chief. His son is our current fire chief. Tommy served in our planning division for seventeen years. Daughter Kim is on the wall there. She served, I believe, five years as a pro-council person. The Wharton family is, is well-known in all respects, well-thought-out and I just wanted to commend her for all the years of service. Hold on.
Graham O'Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Gina Stravic.
Yes.
Roger Vroom.
Yes.
Fred Weed.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes. Bill Zabutus.
I move on a total payment of two million, two hundred ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred and five dollars and eighty-two cents in bills of vouchers.
His second map.
Councilmembers Graham O'Brady.
Yes.
Tom Mitchell.
Yes.
Gina Stravic.
Yes.
Roger Vroom.
Yes.
Fred Weed.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes. Mr. Mitchell.
Move for adjournment.
Second. Paul Verne.
Aye.
So you're two weeks. Be so excited to sign it up.